A meeting to order. Good evening. My name is John Samia, and I'm the chairman of the Board of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen on behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office. I want to welcome you to our November 9th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is brought to you by Mark Sarah of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30 and 330 in Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on the same channels from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting on November 23rd, 2021. At our next meeting, we have invited the school department to provide its departmental update as we have previously done with the police and fire departments. We will also be meeting with the school department as part of our commitment to the community in connection with the May 2021 override. First item under preliminaries is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
So moved.
Second. I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve minutes of October 18th, 2021, October 19th, 2021, and October 26th, 2021.
Move approval.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is announcements and reports. Colleagues, any announcements or reports? I have two. On Thursday, there'll be a Veterans Day ceremony. It'd be nice to be back in person after last year having the caravan at the Old Beale to get back to the traditional ceremony that we've had in the past. The annual Veterans Day ceremony will be held in person on this Thursday, November 11th, 2021, at 11:00 a.m. at the World War I Memorial in front of the Old Beale School. Please bring a lawn chair, as there will be limited seats available. The ceremony will feature speakers from local governments and from the Shrewsbury Veterans Council, along with musical selections and remembrances. All are welcome to attend this ceremony, which will be held outdoors. And a second announcement, the Council on Aging Congregate Dining is back. Join us at the Shrewsbury Senior Center Village Cafe for Congregate Dining Monday through Friday, 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Orders must be placed 48 hours in advance. Meals are $2.50 each. Call the Senior Center at 508-841-8640 to place your order today. More information can be found by visiting www.shrewsburymass.gov and going on the Council on Aging page. And that's all I have under announcements. There's not any Town Managers report per se, but the next item on the agenda under special reports, actions, updates, COVID-19 update. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, board members. Providing an update to you since your last meeting on October 26th, 2021. There has been an increase of 91 additional COVID-19 cases since the 26th. We are seeing a slight downward trend over the past week with only 44 cases in that period of time. This week, we seem to be seeing that better trend continue. We'll provide our next update to the public this Friday and keep everyone informed that way. There has been an increase of one death since our last meeting, bringing the total of Shrewsbury residents who have been indicated have passed away from COVID-19 to 76. This is the trend graph that continues. Again, the most recent data does look positive, having, you know, one or two cases a day, and we'll provide further updates on Friday. Turning to the vaccination data, we continue to see a significant uptick in the amount of doses that are provided to residents. These are exclusive of any booster shots that we've provided, and we now have at least 78% of our residents that have at least one dose of the vaccine, fully vaccinated. We have moved from 70 to 71%, which is where we were at your last meeting. A little difficult to see on the screen, but with those, that big uptick in the first dose, we now have four age cohorts on the screen that are at least 95% vaccinated, and we now have several cohorts that are over 80% vaccinated, fully vaccinated, excuse me. So again, 78% total have at least one dose, and 71% are fully vaccinated. The age breakdown on the bottom is the COVID cases of the 3,572 that we have experienced through November 5th. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. And Mr. Mizikar, next item under financial business, discuss the fiscal year 2023 revenue manual.
Just wait for this to come up. So, board members, it's my goal this evening to provide you an overview and get your feedback on our initial recommendation that we use for the fiscal year 2023 budget process. Starting with an overview of all revenues, our revenue sources continue to remain very constant as far as what percentage of revenue we receive from various categories. Our plan for fiscal year 2023, at least at this point, is to raise to the entire levy limit, which includes all funds that have been voted and approved by town residents through the nine and a half million dollar override in fiscal year. They came last fiscal year in May. We, of course, didn't raise to the full levy limit, which we'll get into a little bit more details this evening as we set the tax rate on your agenda, but let me walk through these various revenue categories. I'm only going to focus on our largest categories, and I'll spend a little bit of time on local receipts and be happy to answer any questions that you have throughout. So in total, the initial revenue estimate for fiscal year 23, which will begin next July, is 164,140,263. Just take a couple of minutes here and talk about the base tax or the tax levy in and of itself. On the screen, I've included data from fiscal years 21 and 22, and then the recommendation that we use moving into fiscal year 23. Slightly over $4 million increase in the tax levy that we will seek to raise for fiscal year 23's budget. Of note, I think if I can just take an opportunity here to talk a little bit about debt service, we will be experiencing a decrease in the amount of taxes that we need from residents, a little over a half a million dollars for debt service purposes, which will allow for downward pressure on the tax rate, which is always good. The biggest change that we'll see year over year is that fiscal year 23 is the last year for the payment on the Shrewsbury High School. The vast majority of those funds were received from the school building authority at the state, but there is over $200,000, or that half a million, that will come in relief from paying that off. The other significant portion year over year is the payment, the payoff of Centec North, which occurred in this fiscal year. And then, of course, we use declining debt service. Declining debt service provides us the benefit of having lower amounts year over year as interest declines throughout the 20-year term of our borrowings. So again, a little over $4 million additional in the tax levy to be raised from taxpayers for the fiscal year. Our second-largest revenue category is state aid. We're always very conservative this early in the budget process. The governor does not introduce his budget until late January, and we rely upon that. Those figures for our fiscal projection one, which we will publish later in the month of January, early in February. At this point, we're projecting an increase in general government aid of only 1% year over year. The biggest reduction, or the biggest change year over year, again, is the reduced funding for the school construction for the high schools since that debt service payment goes away, but there is an overall increase, if you hold constant for the school construction, of over $200,000 of an increase in total aid, the largest portion of which comes from our $30 per pupil increase in school aid that we're anticipating to receive again based upon the current state legislative formula. I won't spend a lot of time on utility revenue, as this is a very immature number at this point. Basically, these funds are what are estimated to cover the general operating expenses of our utilities, at just under $19 million for fiscal year 23. It does not include robust capital planning for those projects, and in the end, when we compare fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 22, I think we'll be much closer to the $21 million number that we budgeted in '22, once we finalize the fiscal year 23 project. This will be the first full year for the new sewer rates. So far, they have panned out as we have expected, and we will continue to use those revenues as set forth by the sewer commissioners. Our third-largest revenue category is local receipts, and at this point, we are projecting the largest increase in local receipts out of any revenue category, nearly a 7.6% increase. We're very impressed by the rapid recovery that we have experienced from the fiscal year 20 decline related to COVID-19 in that final quarter. We are experiencing, currently experience, a very V-shaped recovery, where fiscal year 21 exceeded our revenue estimate by over $2.6 million. You can see fiscal year '22 was very conservative, as we were having those initial conversations last year at this time, and we are able to introduce almost $700,000 in new revenue estimates for fiscal year '23 while still being conservative due to uncertainty in some of our largest revenue categories, including motor vehicle excise tax. So here's a year-over-year comparison over the previous fiscal years and comparison to what we're recommending for fiscal year '23. I look forward to continuing to refine these numbers, but this is one of the areas of the revenue model that we go into very great detail, and we often rely upon a five, 10, or 20-year compounded average growth rate as we set these revenues, which are very elastic, one of our most elastic revenue sources that we introduce in our overall revenue model. The largest category within local receipts is our motor vehicle excise tax, which is imposed in various percentages upon the manufacturer's suggested retail price of vehicles. We did see a great rebound during fiscal year '21, all in all, despite the pressures on the motor vehicle industry, but those pressures continue to require us to be conservative for fiscal year '23. While it is a slight increase over the fiscal year '22 budget, we do need to see improvements in that industry and the availability of motor vehicles to be able to increase that at any point during this budget process. Our second-largest category within local receipts is the funding that we receive for the deposit of ash into our landfill on Route 20. That is operated under an agreement that provides a formula for the amount of funding that we receive. We have a slight decrease year over year from the FY '22 budget to the FY '23 recommendation, moving that from 1.5 million to $1,450,000. This is based upon the latest reconciliation of landfill ash that was actually placed during fiscal year '21. We obviously know that there could be a serious decline in this revenue category with roughly eight to nine years of life remaining in the amount of space that's available, but the operator continues to look for expansion opportunities, both within the current footprint and beyond. Licenses and permits is a very interesting revenue category, especially in light of its performance during fiscal year '21. We, of course, saw a lot of individual investments, whether it's additions, improvements in interior to homes, installation of pools, and other personal investments into individuals' real estate. That revenue category is obviously greatly enhanced through the issuance of permits for all aspects of, or most of the aspects of, the redevelopment project of the Edgemere Diner. Given those strong upward and beneficial pressures in fiscal year '21, we are able to increase our recommendation above and beyond what we have for fiscal year '22, but we do think fiscal year '21 is an anomaly. If we reflect back to fiscal year '17, that was the main year that permits were pulled for our Lakeway Commons major redevelopment, so we do anticipate fiscal year '22 coming in more towards the norm and then a flattening within fiscal year '23. It is an increase up to $980,000 over our current budget year estimate, so it will help enable us to have more resources available for operations of departments. Briefly, final few slides here. Free cash, we will recommend. Basically, I'm slightly below the fiscal year '22 budgeted level, and we are not anticipating using any free cash within the operating budget, given the benefit of the operational override and our ability to solidify our financial position through that vote. With the reduction of levy, we plan to fund this based upon previous years with the funding coming in for general offsets to the tax levy from the municipal like cable TV revenue and our historically-used number of $500,000 in free cash. So again, to summarize, oh, excuse me, this is other available funds, very consistent year over year. It's a $2 million, $2.3 million decline. That was due to the investment that the board placed into the redevelopment of the Toblin Hill Bridge from the proceeds of the sale of Centec North. That being taken out, the vast majority of these funds come in from Selco for the, from Selco for the payment of the debt that they have taken on underneath the town, so those revenues go out towards their debt service schedule. So not a lot of new changes within this final revenue category. I'll take a couple of minutes to just talk about the projections that we put in place as we talked about the override last spring, and this board voted to support and affirm at your March 16th, 2021 meeting. So on the screen through those slides, we had our initial FY '22 numbers for revenue, and then our final FY '22 numbers, where we are able to provide relief to the taxpayers and not raise to the levy limit, foregoing roughly $1.4 million that would have been generated through the override. As we look forward to fiscal year '23, we still have the full benefit of the nine and a half million dollar override, which increases our base tax levy significantly, and we anticipate having strong new growth figures, again, as some major developments continue to progress within the community. I've highlighted those three different areas, which I'll talk a little bit more in the coming slides, as they're critical to our near-term decision with regards to funding directions and how departments will pull together their budgets for fiscal projection one. So those recurring revenues that I had highlighted on the previous slide, when I compare our March 16th, 2021 estimates to our current estimate that we pulled together last week, I see an increase of $646,000 over what we thought we would have had in March. This is certainly a significant increase and provides great opportunities for us to continue to fund the needs in the operations of town departments, but board members, at this time, I do not, those figures do not sufficiently enable us to fully move towards those additional half percent funding opportunities that are laid out in the framework to the community and the commitment with the, commitment to the community and framework with the school committee. We'll certainly continue to refine this budget estimate, but at this point, I think we would be well-served with the base budget recommendation as we begin our discussions with the school committee in the coming weeks. So here's the summary. Again, in total, year over year, it's a slight decrease, but actual revenues, we will experience more resources in fiscal year '23 than in fiscal year '22, when we hold fast for some anomalies, and certainly benefit from the override and taking full advantage of that and the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2 and the strong economic recovery within our local receipts areas. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have and continue to work with you through the entire budget process this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments? I have a couple of quick questions. In terms of current trends right now, how are we trending on, particularly on local receipts? How are we doing relative to budget?
I think the strongest areas that I'm seeing in comparison to budget are meals taxes. I think we, in the first quarter of the year, we raised almost 50% of our projection, so we do see those economic activities returning. I think it's interesting with regards to that category is that we barely got to experience the benefits of the Lakeway Commons development and those restaurants in that area, and now we're, as we emerge from the pandemic, seeing a lot of economic activity in that area. Also, strong revenue from marijuana excise tax. Obviously, still way too early on that largest revenue category of motor vehicle excise taxes. That doesn't really firm up until the beginning of the second quarter of calendar year '22.
Thank you. Any, well, I guess it's early in the part, just who knows with the way automobile dealerships right now, you see some of the lots are skinnier and issue with chips and all that, to see whether or not that will impact us as we go forward, particularly with new vehicles. Just one more question. Are you seeing through your town manager network or other communities having the same V rebounding, local receipts-type recovery? Are we unique in that area, do you know?
I actually haven't had that conversation, but I'm happy to explore that a little bit and see where we are.
I'm just curious. You have enough on your plate if you happen to talk to, be curious to see if we're par for the course, if we're unique in that area. So thank you. I don't have any other questions. Anything else?
I just have a question, maybe something that the manager just can explain. So, given the framework that we put into place prior to the override passing last spring, how does that change the budgeting process now, and how will that change what the community kind of can expect to see going forward? You know, manager releases the budget, we're usually like looking to see the difference between the superintendent's budget and the manager's budget. I think this is going to be a much smoother process, and I think it would be something that might be good for our viewers to understand.
Yeah, definitely, there's going to be a lot less back and forth, a lot more certainty in the process. I think we're in a very unique position where we already have a number that's identified as a bottom line for municipal operation, those shared services and the school, and that number is inherently committed to already with the school committee and the board. We certainly have some additional revenue over the March estimate that we need to have a conversation about. Certainly doesn't rise to the full level to, you know, do the full half percent increase, but there's just so much more certainty. You know, we never really had a good idea on the available funding for any of those three categories until we got departmental budgets back and kind of seen where the greatest needs were, and while that will still be an important part of the budget process, we know what those, you know, maximum spending limits are and what we've already committed to the community and where, you know, they'll really fall in those three buckets as we progress towards town meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good question, and as I mentioned at the introduction, at our next meeting on the 23rd, the school department will come and not only provide the departmental update, but also that'll be the first of two meetings that we committed to as part of this process. So we'll see how it unfolds. It will definitely be different than all of us who have been involved for a period of time than we've seen in the past, so it'll be great on the 23rd to have a different type of discussion than we've had January, February, March-type deal in terms of what can't be funded and prioritization, so that'll be good. Any other questions or comments? Mr. DiPaolo.
Mr. Mizikar, on these numbers, particularly local receipts, where do you see the biggest exposure in terms of it not, in the end, looking like it's going to be where you're projecting? I mean, where's that biggest exposure to a downside?
Yeah, I mean, I think how stable we are in the licenses and permits, how much of that economic activity in real estate, you know, investments and continues into the coming year. Motor vehicle, obviously, being our largest category. If there isn't a real upward production with chips and other global supply chain issues, we could see issues there. I mean, it's always very hard. One of the biggest challenges in our entire budget process, especially in setting revenues, is that we're talking here on November 9th of 2021 and trying to estimate what revenues are, starting July 1 of 2022 and going through June 30th of 2023. So a lot of time and a lot of changes, things that can happen, but I think those are the two biggest areas of concern. We're pretty conservative elsewhere in the estimate.
If new car sales don't pick up because of availability, the way the excise tax model works, you're going to see, there's big drops after the first year, so if there aren't new cars coming into the pipeline, it doesn't make any difference, used car, what you actually pay for it, right? It's a value set. So if we're not getting a lot of new cars in the mix, it's going to drop down faster, right?
Right.
There's nothing to offset that drop in the second, third year, fourth year.
Right, and that's why I'm really concerned about fiscal year '23, maybe even more than fiscal year '22. Fiscal year '21's budget showed that there was still a relatively strong amount of car sales, but if there becomes that lull, we're really going to see that in fiscal year '23.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is under Meetings, Hearings. We have a joint meeting, a tax classification public hearing, and joint meeting with the Board of Assessors. The board will review and take action upon the conclusion of the public hearing relative to the adoption of the fiscal 2022 tax rate for all property classifications within the town of Shrewsbury. Colleagues, this is a public hearing, so entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you. If you could introduce yourself.
I'm Frank Stella. I'm a member of the board.
And I'm Ruth Anderson. I'm your principal assessor.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Welcome to the classification hearing for 2022. So the purpose of this hearing today is for me to report on the final values for fiscal '22 and for this board to vote on the adoption of a residential factor, and our recommendation will be a motion that the board votes to accept a tax rate factor for fiscal '22. Our recommendation will be that it's a factor of one, and also a motion that the board authorizes me as principal assessor to electronically sign the LA 5 on a DOR gateway program so that we can submit for certification of our fiscal '22 rate. Our values were certified by the Department of Revenue on October 25th. Assessments are based on sales that occurred during calendar 2020. Fiscal '22 is an interim year in our five-year revale cycle. Our next revale will be fiscal '26 and every five years thereafter. So this is just a glossary of important terms that I use every day, but most other people in the general public don't, so I like to provide it just so that you can get familiar with them and what they mean, and some of these terms will show up throughout the presentation. So some general data and statistics for Shrewsbury this year. Our assessment date every year is the January 1st prior to the start of the fiscal year, so for '22, January 1st of 2021. So everything that was true on that date is going to drive the assessments for fiscal '22. However, we are what's called a 653 community, meaning we can pick up new growth through June 30th, so any property that was under construction or getting an addition or anything like that, those properties are being, will be assessed based on what was true June 30th, the day before the start of the fiscal year. And also here are the property classification classes, which are set by the Department of Revenue. I also, I include those only because those classes show up throughout the presentation so that you know what we're talking about. I also, I include those only because those classes show up throughout the presentation so that you know what we're talking about. So new construction is going crazy in Shrewsbury, like most other places in central Mass. We've got the 250 apartments coming on on Plinth Pond Circle out at Edgemere, as well as the new grocery store, some retail spaces out there. Those should be completed. It's my, what I hear is over the next couple of years. Construction has started at Centec North. They're doing site work over there to construct three buildings containing about 300,000 square feet. Those should be, I think they're going to be logistic facilities and commercial, possibly some office use. And open permits since the start of the fiscal year include 20 new houses, 33 for additions like finished basements and things like that, nine for commercial construction totaling nearly $37 million. So that money or that growth will be available for growth over the next several years as things get completed. So the assessors vote to grant exemptions every year based on certain qualifications, whether somebody is a veteran or a senior or of limited means. So for 21, we granted 219 exemptions for a total of $160,302.50 in credits to tax bills. The board also granted 16 appeals for a total abated value of $934,570. Our parcel counts changed by 12, we added 12 single families, 38 condos and two, two families. And at the bottom of this slide, you'll see the total townwide valuation changes from fiscal 21 to 22. Single families up 8.73%, two families 8.62%, condos 6.56%, apartments 11.39%. Commercial, industrial, less than half a percent, and personal business, business, personal property, just over 1%. So adjustments to value. I stated earlier that values are based on the market. The market in Shrewsbury is, for lack of a better term, going gangbusters. So this screen shows you a comparison of the last three years showing qualified sales. Qualified sale is something that property is actually on the market and available to anyone that wants to buy it. So it's not you selling to your brother or inheriting from your family or anything like that. So this slide shows the last three years for single families and condos, with the 2021 sales are January through September 30th. And you'll see that for single families, the average sale price is up almost $100,000 from 2019. And properties are selling in 2021 for almost 105% of their asking. And similar numbers for the condominiums, 102% of asking and about $72,000 higher in the last two years. So the residential changes, the big numbers. This chart shows you your fiscal 21 values, your market adjustments, our new growth and fiscal 22 value. It just breaks down those changes that were shown on an earlier slide. So single families, close to 9%, condos, six and a half, multifamilies, 10 and a half. That number is, the multifamily number is driven by the Edgemere Crossing. That's where the bulk of that comes from. And then on the commercial, industrial and personal property side, numbers are lower. Commercial and industrial properties took a hit during COVID, and it's reflected in their values. So overall totals, 7.47% increase across the board for the community. This shows this, it's hard to see, I guess. This shows the same data, but it's broken down by actual individual class and use code from 21 to 22. So going on to valuation and the levy. So this listing shows the historic changes in assessed values by class over the last 10 years, including total values for the town and the corresponding tax rate. It's interesting to me that the values from last year to this year increased by almost a half a billion dollars. Same 10-year time period, this shows the differences between the average single-family home assessment and the average single-family home tax bill, as well as the rate and the levy. So determining the levy, we've heard that Mr. Mizikhar talked about it a lot. It's a big number as far as I'm concerned. So to get to the levy, it's the amount that needs to be raised through taxation in order to meet the budget requirements for the town that are approved at town meeting. So this screen shows you how much we meet. So what was voted at town meeting by the town meeting members, how much they want to spend. And then from that, we subtract all other sources of income. State receipts, town receipts, free cash and other things like the stabilization fund or unexpected funds from the prior year. And what's left is the levy. That's what we have to raise through taxation in order to meet that budget. And for the visual learners, it's the same data, just. And then the levy limit, we talk about that a lot too, but I don't know. It took me a long time to understand this over the years. So the levy limit is the amount that the community is allowed to raise through taxation. And it's part of Prop 2 and a Half that we all hear so much about. So basically, we start with the levy limit from last year, fiscal 21. We add our 2 and a half percent plus new growth plus the voted override. And we get the levy limit for fiscal 22, which is the $90,227,740. The levy ceiling is calculated by taking 2 and a half percent of the total assessed value of all property in town. The ceiling is the absolute top that you can ever, ever raise. And it basically means you can never ever tax rate over $25 per thousand. To determine the excess levy capacity, we take the calculated levy limit and we add in the voted debt exclusions. So the town has voted over the past to borrow money for certain things. So that's what the debt exclusion is. And we get the maximum allowable levy. And the difference between that total and our actual levy is the excess capacity or the amount that the town could have spent without needing an override. And this year, that number is $1,439 and some change. That's actually changed slightly from what you were given just because as we enter data into the recap, everything shifts just a tiny little bit. I said earlier that the tax rate is just math, and it's derived from a simple mathematical equation involving the total value in the town as certified by DOR and the total amount of the levy as required through the vote of the community at town meeting. So this year, using that math, we would come up with a tax rate of $14.11 per thousand. So how does your overall value affect your taxes? The answer is, it doesn't. So let's just say that the value in Shrewsbury increases across the board by 30%, but your levy stays the same. The only thing that changes is your tax rate. Everybody's bill is going to be the same. So this chart shows how that math works. So if the increases, the value increases by 30% across the board, the rate goes down to 1085, but everyone pays the same as they did before. And the contrast is the same as well. If all values decrease at the same rate, but the levy stays the same, your tax bill is going to be the same. So Shrewsbury, as you all know, is largely residential and has been for at least the last 10 years, shown on this chart. Residential values make up around 87 to 88% of the total town value since 2012. And most communities don't consider splitting the rate unless the residential values equal less than 75% of the total. So what happens if you do split the rate? This chart shows that if we shift the burden in 10% increments onto the commercial and industrial properties, the savings for the residential owners would be incremental, while the increases for the business community would be significant. Another choice before the board tonight is whether to adopt a residential exemption. This option essentially shifts the burden of the residential tax base onto the more expensive homes. And it's mostly popular in communities that have a lot of vacation homes, very high-value properties. So you'll note that the list on the right confirms that with several of those being on the Cape or the islands. And only 15 communities within the Commonwealth adopted this exemption last year. Shrewsbury was not one of them. And the third option to be decided tonight is whether to adopt a small commercial exemption. It's a similar process as the residential exemption and would shift the burden of the commercial and industrial tax base onto higher-valued companies. This has also not proven popular within the Commonwealth with only 14 out of the 351 communities adopting it last year. So the decision before the board tonight is to vote on the adoption of a residential factor pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. With the ratio residential to commercial industrial properties in Shrewsbury being approximately 7 to 1, that means that for every dollar saved by a residential taxpayer, will translate to an additional $7 paid on the commercial industrial side. And in addition, utilizing the standard income approach to valuing commercial and industrial property, higher taxes, which are counted as an expense, will reduce the value of those properties in subsequent years. So the argument can be made that the benefit reaped on the residential taxpayer will be negated in future years by lower overall values within the 10. So we have your top 15 taxpayers in town with their associated percentage of total value on the far right. And then because we like to know what our neighbors are paying, I've developed these slides to showcase how Shrewsbury stacked up last year compared to neighboring Grafton, Northborough, Westborough, as well as Natick, which is actually very close to Shrewsbury demographically. I'm very upset that my taxes in Grafton are higher than Shrewsbury.
Can't always move here.
And I think they will be this year as well. I spoke to the assessor in Grafton, and I think they're going to go up. So these just show the last five years and where all of those communities stacked up. And then this one just shows where Shrewsbury ranked as far as the average single-family tax bill in fiscal 21 compared to those same four communities. So we were the lowest pretty much by quite a bit. So finally, as my public service announcement that I will deliver each year that I'm sitting in this chair is I encourage every taxpayer to check their property record card to make sure that it's accurate. Assessors like to think that we're perfect, but we are not. And mistakes get made, and sometimes they carry forward for several years before they are noticed and can be corrected. So people can look up their value through the assessors' page on the town website. And if something's incorrect, please call and schedule an appointment so we can make sure you are not assessed for something that you do not have. And fiscal 22 value should be posted within the next couple of weeks. Finally, I want to thank this community for welcoming me on board in the last six months ago, especially the Board of Assessors, Mr. Mizikhar, for their encouragement and support. Very grateful to be here.
We're very glad to have you.
Thank you.
So it was a great report, very comprehensive and very clear. So thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments? And then I'll give anyone in the audience, if there's any questions, anyone?
Well, I just, that was probably one of the most concise, information-packed hearings we've had in a long, long time. Nobody made it through it that quick, ever. Except for one time when we took a shortcut, but I do have one question. So what's the significance of the, of the 75% percentage of residential to industrial where communities would start? I know the thing about the balance is very, it, there's very little benefit to the residential if it's really up, if it's lopsided. But what specifically is about the 75?
I think the 75, it's not a hard and fast rule. I think it's more of a general rule of thumb that the benefits to the residential class don't really become significant until it starts to get close to that ratio.
The lower the, lower the, or closer the split, the more benefit to the residential.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Cassavan?
Thank you very much for the report. It was extremely interesting. I had a great time and got sucked into the database looking at not only my home values, but then other homes around me.
Welcome to my world.
Way too much time. So when we see that decreased number for the commercial, industrial, is that like businesses like Bed Bath Beyond and Pier One closing? Is that why you see the number going down?
That's part of it. Another part of it is also because we had a very large parcel that was assessed as commercial vacant land last year that this year has gone back into Chapter 61, which carries with it a very significant value drop. So that is part of it, but also restaurants and retail went down in general because of COVID. So we're hoping to see a rebound, but we can't predict when or how much.
One more question.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So whenever we work on an override, we inevitably hear from the community, why can't businesses be paying more taxes than residential? And you did a very nice job of explaining it, but could you make it even simpler as to why that's not something that's recommended?
To be blunt, if you, if I owned a business and I was looking to relocate, because taxes are such a large part of my expense line, I'm going to go where it's cheapest.
So it actually discourages businesses from locating here when you're trying. And it, from what I can see in your report, it doesn't save the residential taxpayer that much money. It's not significant enough to offset the detriment to attracting and retaining businesses in town.
Exactly.
Thanks. I just think it's a, it's always an argument that people will make, and I just think it's so important to take an opportunity to really explain why that's not a decision that this board has ever made and likely one we're not going to make in the near future.
Like I said earlier, so if, if a property is, if a commercial property is valued on the income approach, which is one thing that we have to look at, because if you're an investor, you want to know how much is a property going to make me before I buy it. So that's what drives their value. If their expenses are higher, their value goes down. So if their taxes are higher, their expenses are higher, so their value goes down. So that means that they're going to carry less of the burden overall if the overall value of that class is diminished.
Thank you. You have a really great way of explaining things.
Oh, thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one quick question on abatement. So just to clarify, the abated value is just, it's not reduced taxation. It's just lower value. So if the house, in looking at the overall value in property, if it's $7 billion, it's just a million less? Is that what that is for abatements?
Correct.
Okay. So what would happen, like you said earlier, home values have continued to skyrocket, and it's interesting to see over list the prices that are getting out there. And it seems that the demand has exceeded supply, particularly over the last year. What happens if there were double that or triple that in a year? How would that play out from a timing standpoint that if it became meaningful in terms of dollars? It still seems like abatement of value of $950,000 or $934,000 isn't a big number. But when does the abatement happen? Is it in the subsequent tax year? Is it in the subsequent tax year, or do you end up with a deficit as, so you set the rate, and then someone asks for an abatement, and then you give it to them? When does that happen? In that current fiscal year or the following?
Both. So let's say a property is assessed at a million dollars, and they apply for abatement, and we realize that, whoops, they don't have a finished basement that we thought they had. So that's fifty thousand dollars. Okay, so they should have been assessed at nine fifty. So we abate the tax on the fifty thousand, we refund that back to them, and then the nine fifty becomes the starting point going forward. So any market adjustments, if the market continues to increase, will be applied to that nine fifty instead of the million. So it's kind of cumulative, but it's not that they stay at nine fifty for the foreseeable future. That just becomes the new starting point.
And does it ever create a gap in a tax year? Because you've abated it, you've set the tax rate based on valuation, and now you've set that.
Right.
And then you have an abatement during the year, so now it's not a big number, but what, how do you fill that gap? For that example that you just gave, it's not a lot of money, but...
Right, so the tax dollar-wise is all, comes out of the overlay account, so it doesn't hit the bottom line for the town. But then I think it just becomes, so if, if values are, let's say I did a terrible job at doing my job and over-assessed everybody by two percent. Okay, so that means going forward, next year, we make that adjustment, and that just means that your tax rate next year will probably be higher.
Okay.
To account for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so I want to open the floor to anyone in the audience to see if they have any questions or comments. I don't see any hands up. It was so well explained, so thank you. Any final questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And then moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. What's the pleasure of the board? Mr. LeBeau.
Well, first of all, I also want to compliment you. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
You're the third principal assessor I've worked with. Everybody does it a little differently, but everyone does it well, so welcome.
Thank you.
I move the board vote to adopt the residential factor of one. I further move the board adopt, not adopt, a residential exemption. I further move the board not adopt a small commercial exemption. And I further move that we authorize the assessor to put our signatures on the LA-5 form on the recap and to digitally sign the form on the DLS Gateway.
Second. And then moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And again, welcome.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is also under meeting, meetings and hearings. It's a public hearing with Sweta Shaw of Shrewsbury Burritos LLC that does business as Mo's Southwest Grill on sixteen North Quinsigamun Avenue for my common victular license. Please come on. Welcome.
Welcome.
Take a seat at the table, please, if you'd like. This is also a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. And then moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is open. Welcome.
Welcome.
So just, looks like over the summer, took over Mo's Grill.
Correct, yep.
And any questions at all from the board? We have the materials in here, they are complete, all the materials that we need. We have the various responses from the departments. Any questions? Mr. DePaulo?
So except for the change of ownership, everything's staying basically the same?
Everything stays the same, yep. We bought the store, we bought the LLCs, and two other stores, including this one, Shrewsbury.
Hours are basically the same.
Everything remains the same, yep.
Okay, good.
Quick question that I have, just technically, is it Star Lake or Shrewsbury Burritos?
So Shrewsbury Burritos is the LLC that runs that store. Star Lake is our parent LLC.
Ah, okay.
Yep, that owns two other LLCs, one in Westboro and one in Chansworth.
And the insurance is through Star Lake, and it covers all the subsidiaries?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Mrs. Cassavan?
I see we have outstanding taxes for this quarter. Is that something that's still outstanding? Does, do we know if that's been taken care of?
Is that with a real property owner? Go ahead.
It's the property owner's taxes for the quarter.
Okay.
It's the property owner. He's owned both buildings.
All right, great, thank you.
That would be the landlord.
Yep, thanks.
Any other questions? If not, I will open it up to the public. Are there any, is anyone in the audience that would have any questions or comments? Not seeing any. Board members, any final questions or comments? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. And then moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the application for a common victular's license for Sweta Shaw of Shrewsbury Burritos LLC, DBA Mo's Southwest Grill, sixteen North Quinsigamun Avenue.
Second. And then moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under meetings, this is a meeting, not a hearing, with Attorney Trish Farnsworth on behalf of Massachusetts Fine Wines and Spirits LLC, doing business at Total Wine and Moore eighty-seven dash ninety-seven Boston Turnpike for a change of manager and change of officers to their all-alcohol retail package store license. Good evening, if you could introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Trish Farnsworth, Lawson and Watson in Boston, here on behalf of the applicant. And with me is John Calais, the proposed manager on the license. This is a two-part application. It's just to change the LLC manager analogous to a director change, and to also put Mr. Calais on the license as the manager. He has many, many years of retail experience, new to the alcohol industry, but he's tip-certified and more than capable. So if you have any questions or anything for him.
Colleagues, any questions or comments? I don't have any. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, no, it's not a public hearing. Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the application for a change of manager to John Calais for the all-alcohol retail package store license and approve, I further move the board approve the change of offices to add Richard J. Lapachelle Jr. as the LLC manager on record for the retail package store license for Massachusetts Fine Wines and Spirits LLC, DBA Total Wines and Moore eighty-seven dash ninety-seven Boston Turnpike.
Second. And then moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great, thanks for your time.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a meeting with Gray Star Development for their proposal regarding a local initiative program, or LIP, Comprehensive Permit Forty-B for a senior fifty-five-plus, one hundred and ninety-six-unit multifamily development located at four hundred and nine South Street. Mrs. Loss, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure, and I'd like to welcome the participants. Again, my name is Kristin Last, Assistant Town Manager. With us this evening are representatives from Gray Star and their associated partners. They approached the town of Shrewsbury a month or so ago regarding a potential forty-B development at four oh nine South Street, which is towards the intersection of South Street and Route twenty, and they wish to make a presentation to your board this evening related to this comprehensive permit potential. So if, that's all I have, if you'd like to move forward with them and their presentation, and I can certainly wrap up at the end if there's any questions by the board.
That's great, thank you. If you could introduce yourself, and good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board. My name is Tom Powers, Powers Realty Development and Consulting. I am the project manager, development consultant, working directly with Gray Star, and will be subject to the board's interest, shepherding the project through the permitting and the approval process. I'm here tonight with what I call an all-star team of Gray Star Development East LLC, with Greg Legakie here, the architectural team, Tom Schultz, Phil Cudero from Allen and Major, civil engineer, and Karen Kepler, counsel from Sullivan and Worcester. And we're here tonight to present the, the Gray Star's vision for the property, and to give you just a general overview of what our intentions are, what our interest is, and see if the board has an interest in pursuing a local initiative program, which we would, we would work, you know, directly with the board and the town manager, and pursue a LIP application and file it, and hopefully with DHCD move forward with that to get a project eligibility letter. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, who will give you an overview of Gray Star and their, their abilities, and what they've accomplished over the years and here in Boston, and then turn it over to Tom Schultz, Phil Cudero, and then open it up for questions and, questions and answers.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks, Tom. Thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen, for the opportunity here. My name's Chris Legatsky. I'm a director of development with Gray Star in our northeast operations here. If I may, I have printouts of the presentation, if that would be preferable to the screen here. May I distribute these, or would you rather?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you.
So Tom gave a good overview of what we're trying to achieve here. I'll start out by giving a description of the site here and just setting the scene so we're all aware of the property, and then we'll get into some details of the project that we envision here. So the site is approximately fifteen acres. It's located at the intersection of Route twenty and South Street, and it's currently unoccupied but for some light agricultural uses. The property has frontage along Route twenty, but has access along Chestnut Street, and the other end of Chestnut Street terminates at Route nine, approximately half mile away. Along that stretch of Chestnut Street and South Street, the neighbors include the UMass facility, Charles River Laboratories, and the Centike Park, and a handful of the car dealerships and light industrial uses closer to Route nine. So you aren't able to see it in this view, but the site plan on the right actually has a pretty significant sloping that goes across the site. So the elevation is highest on the property along Chestnut Street, and it actually goes down by about ninety vertical feet as you move towards the east side of the plan there. So we're here, as Tom had mentioned, to discuss a potential residential project that we're proposing for the site. So I'm sure you all are aware that affordability of housing continues to be a rising issue across the state, and particularly challenging for residents who are transitioning between housing arrangements and wish to remain in their communities. So we've reviewed the Shrewsbury master plan and the housing production plan, and commend the town for the thoughtful approach to tackling this regional issue. We understand that among key issues to the town is the provision of affordable housing options for aging seniors, particularly rental properties, as they have demonstrated a significantly lesser housing cost burden than for-sale properties. So it was, I think, very fortunate timing to come on the heels of the assessor's presentation and understand just the significance of that increase in the housing cost market. So the project we're proposing would be fifty-five-plus age-restricted rental community of one hundred and ninety-six units. We are seeking a comprehensive permit through the forty-B process and through the local initiative program, AKA LIP. Through this, twenty-five percent of the units would be designated as affordable, but one hundred percent of the total project units would count towards Shrewsbury's subsidized housing inventory. So we understand that for over a decade, Shrewsbury's been strategically working towards the state's statutory minimum of ten percent affordable units. So in addition to contributing to that goal in a meaningful way with all one hundred and ninety-six units, the project would allow for means for safe harboring related to future potential forty-B projects if we elect to go forward. So throughout the presentation, you'll hear us use the term active adult, which is how we refer to this type of age-restricted community. The community will be leased exclusively to residents aged fifty-five years and older. Residents will live fully independently. There will no, there will be no provision of medical services or assisted living-type services in the community. However, it is different from a conventional multifamily in that the key differentiator is, is the active adult programming and social elements that Gray Star incorporates into these, these types of properties. So we'll talk more on that, that later, but it is, you know, it's somewhere between a conventional multifamily property and a, more of a, an involved aging community. So naturally, this type of age-restricted community will bear less on the public education and transit systems. There will be restrictions against children living in the community, and a high percentage of this demographic is retired or semi-retired. Additionally, under the zoning ordinance, this property is located in an office research area and is adjacent to limited industrial uses. That, and the fact that one hundred percent of vehicular traffic will be routed directly to Route nine or Route nine, or, sorry, Route nine or Route twenty, means that there will be very limited impact on residential neighborhoods within Shrewsbury. Lastly, the project will provide a substantial stream of new real estate taxes for the town that will be much more steady and predictable than commercial-driven real estate taxes that are largely, as we've discussed tonight, driven by the performance of individual businesses in the community. So now I'll transition and take some time to introduce each of our team members in more detail, actually let everyone speak and talk about their relevant experience here. So first and foremost, recognizing that the town of Shrewsbury, in our mind, is, is the main driver of this group. And in, you know, in the way that we think about this team, it's us collectively working together and executing on the objectives of Shrewsbury's housing plan and supporting the needs of the residents with respect to a rental community of this nature. So I'll start with Gray Star. Gray Star is a leading, fully-integrated real estate company. We operate around the country, and in the northeast office, we're headquartered in Boston. We offer development services, but really at our heart, Gray Star is a property management and operations company. So our vertically integrated business is centered around operating the properties after development completion. So we bring that into our communities at the onset. We design around how the properties will be used, the type of services that we will offer, and then we ultimately deliver communities that we retain and we are the manager in. So within the multifamily space, Gray Star is one of the largest active adult developers in the country. We currently have forty-six communities under development, which represent approximately eighty-five hundred units. So in this project, we're proposing that Gray Star would act as the developer and the general contractor, and would lead the community engagement and planning process, oversee engineering and design development, and ultimately oversee the property management and operations as well. So understanding that LIP experience is relevant here, and obviously a very nuanced type of development project, we did note a couple of projects that we have underway or that we've completed, between myself and Tom's experience here at the bottom of the screen. Couple of sample projects that I'd like to go through here, the first of which is an active adult community that Gray Star recently developed in Cape Cod. This is in Barnstable. The property is called Everly Cape Cod. This is a good example of the type of community that we're envisioning here, and I'd like to flip through a couple pictures and then talk about some of the programs that we offer there. We obviously aren't, aren't this far in the project design, so, so it's, you know, it's helpful to see what's been done and the type of program that we typically deliver, and this one happens to be right here in the Commonwealth. So we have a café area on the left, we have a grand common area over on the right with a grand piano that is double-height and connects out to the courtyard with the pool area. This building was actually designed by TAT, who was our architect on, on our proposed project in Shrewsbury. So Tom Schultz, who's here with us today, is on that team and can speak a lot more eloquently than I can to all the thought that went into this sort of programming. But a couple other pictures here of the common areas within that community. And what I think is the most important part here is the types of services that we offer at these, these apartment properties. So like I mentioned earlier in the present, in the presentation here, many of our active adult communities offer a wide range of services. We find that our residents are typically downsizing from a single-family home, and often undergoing a shift in daily activities, childcare responsibilities, and employment, which leads to a lot of transition, and there's, there's an opportunity that we find to make that transition very healthy and very social. And we do that through integrating a wide range of services and activities on our properties here. So these are at no additional cost to the residents. This is just a lifestyle that we build into these communities in order to very, very seamlessly and comfortably transition these residents in, introduce them into their, their, their new neighborhoods, and build the relationships within the community. So a couple of examples here, a lot of physical activities like pickleball, strength and balance training, a lot of other, you know, dexter- balance training, a lot of other, you know, dexterity and, and mental type activities like knitting, poker, game nights, wine, wine nights, you name it. So, you know, this is, this is our typical calendar rotating sort of program. This is from August of that, that Cape Cod property, and this is constantly being, you know, revised, updated, and incorporating feedback in interest of, of the residents. Here's another example project. Won't get in as much detail here, as this is in Texas, and, and, you know, I think we'll just let the, the photos speak for themselves. It's a similar-type program, obviously catered more towards the, the Texas climate, but, but another Gray Star active adult community. So I will jump out, or I guess, yeah, we'll have a hot seat here as I rotate through some of the, the team members, and I'll introduce, or let Tom introduce himself as our lead designer on the project.
Hi, Tom Schultz, the Architectural Team. You may know us from just around the corner from the site. We designed a project, my colleague Anthony Beverito. But we're an architectural firm based in Chelsea, Massachusetts. We have registrations in 29 states, but our core business is in the New England area. We're 95 employees, so on the largest side. This is actually our 50th anniversary year. I've been there for 20 years, doing all sorts of these types of projects with Gray Star. We have over 200 awards. We've delivered over 200,000 units of housing in that 50 years, so this is our core, core business. Active adult is one of the newer types of senior housing that we've seen, and, you know, we're, we're designing those spaces for over 55, not just to age in place, like a continuing care, retiring community, but really to age well in, in place. And so what does that mean? Well, it's all about creating spaces to focus on embracing an active lifestyle for those , for those, and allowing the residents opportunities for engagement and socialization, right? We've all lived the COVID and know that we need that human interaction, right? And that's what, really, the core of, of the active adult, and we try to evoke that and use that as a planning strategy that, that you'll see later on as we, as we develop the building a little bit more. But, you know, the other thing is people downsizing, they're trying to downsize without compromising, right? So they don't want to compromise on the square footage or space, the amount of amenities, and that human interaction. So the, the plan you're going to see when Phil talks in a moment here is, you know, the overall sort of building layout and massing strategy is sort of immersed in that concept of that well-designed environments create happier, healthier people, right? And that's not just for the inhabitants and the interior spaces, it's also the exterior as well, and you'll see that is how we have created sort of a U shape or H shape, a modified H-shaped building that is sited within the hill and very similar to what we did down in Barnstable, where we have that large change of grade that Phil will talk to in a moment, where we're able to, you know, sort of meet the street and the entry on one side at one scale and humanize the building, and then have another scale on, on the backside as well. So that, that partie of the two wings and this connector where most of the amenities will be, it's really creates a sort of crossroads, creating, you know, active, or opportunities for engagement and socialization. As you saw in some of those photos of Barnstable, you know, it's all about creating these light-filled spaces that, you know, if somebody's in a light-filled space, they're just happier. It also, you know, stimulates the, the physical and mental, social and emotional response that offset many effects of aging, right? As Chris mentioned, you know, we're still very early on in, in the design process. We have a building plan and, and some massing studies, but we're still working on the overall project aesthetic, including the exterior design. But we envision creating, you know, a well-articulated facade that, you know, ties in with the New England vernacular and complements Shrewsbury. So these are just some projects we've done. This is Anita, Massachusetts, or Wingate. It's a comparable project that actually has some other types of senior housing in it. This is in Westport, Connecticut.
Great, thanks, Tom. So next, we'll bring in Phil Cordero here, who is our lead engineer with Allen and, Allen and Major.
Thank you, good evening. For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates. Thank you, Chris, and the rest of the team. Happy to present here this evening and discuss the potential project that's in front of you. Allen and Major Associates, we're about 51 years in age. We have three offices. I myself am the branch manager of our Lakeville, Massachusetts office, with another office in Woburn and one in Manchester, New Hampshire, to offer regional services throughout New England for many tiers of different projects, including LIP applications, comprehensive permits, and certainly senior living, which we're happy to proud of this Gray Star team. We offer full complement civil engineering, landscape architects, land surveying, environmental consulting, so anything relative to site development is what we'll, we'll offer to Chris and the team. We've worked on any number of projects up through it, including 1,500-plus units. We have projects that are ongoing in Ashland right now, senior development project. We have LIP applications that we've done in Marion, in Hingham, in Plymouth, a number of different towns throughout the Commonwealth, so we're very familiar with that process and how we can help navigate that with the town. We also are supportive, as, as shown on the slide, of green building, low-impact development. We're not looking to create urban sprawl, we're looking to target the specified product on a particular site and really blend the development into the site rather than approaching it with a clear-cut, level the area and just make it work and, and create that parking lot idea that a lot of civil engineers are famous for. We hope to be better than that. We hope this project will be better than that for you and for the community. On the bottom of the slide, as I mentioned, we have Alton, the Shoba Valley, 229 units that's currently in permitting. The Cove in Hingham is 220 units, Winchester, 147, just to name a few. We are the lead designers on a 1,000-acre, 1,000-unit senior campus in Middleborough on the South Shore. We've been on that project for about 20 years and are very, very proud of that. If you want to advance. Here's an example of our project in Woburn, Benchmark Senior Living. A lot of parallels to what will be here in town, obviously independent living, not medically-based, so we're familiar in that approach. Obviously, we'll take ownership of the outside, the left slide in terms of the layout, the drop-off, the port-cochere. We'll defer to the, the developer and the interior designers and the architects to the slide to the right, but we're happy to be affiliated with that quality of project. Same in Brightview in Billrica. Again, that, that front entry facade, but obviously happiness there expressed on the right side. We've gotten a lot of great feedback on that particular project. Thank you. So what we're presenting here on the slide in front of you now is, is a conceptual site plan. I stress the word conceptual in that it's a build program that really puts together all of the elements that we would look to achieve here, but we have a long, long way to go with conversation through everybody here in town. We appeared at the graces of the Assistant Town Manager. She helped us coordinate a meeting with various department heads back in October, where we were able to present this same plan and really start garnering feedback on it that we'll take through this process. So what you'll see on the plan is the campus style that Tom alluded to in front of me. It is, it is a multi-tiered building, as you can see, centered in the front of, or not centered, but, but located in the front portion of the site, which is accessed off of Chestnut Street. And while the project has access to Chestnut Street, South Street, and then portions of Route 20, we are seeking access off of the Chestnut Street side, which is the area that is currently farmed, that are most, most people are familiar with. That land is currently cleared and graded. And with a 100-foot grade change, or approximately 100 feet, from Chestnut Street to the rear of the site, it really behooves us to think about how the site wants to lay out and where it wants to be. And it wants to be at the front of the site, it wants to be here on Chestnut Street, it wants to be multi-tiered, with the approach of let's not level the entirety of the site, let's work with what we need to, let's work the grade changes accordingly. And the footprint that you see with the parking campus is about five and three-quarter acres out of about 15 acres. So it affords us the ability to preserve the back acreage, preserve the slope, preserve the wetland resource areas that do exist back there, the rivers, the river and waterway that we'll work through with conservation as we go through the process, but leave all that intact and create greenscape around the project, create landscape buffers for all the streets, create a welcoming sense of arrival for anybody coming into the community with a port-cochere drop-off, where you, you're invited to come into the community, invited to come into the building. And then the parking as being necessary to the project obviously is rounded in the campus style. We want full connectivity under this concept plan, so the parking is really structured to feed off of the building. We want full accessibility, given that it's a senior product, so we'll make sure that all aspects of the site are available to everybody. It's entirely walkable, it's grounded, so everybody feels, although it's a large project in terms of number of units and a multi-story building, it'll be grounded to really make everybody feel connected. Through the meeting that we had in October, we met a lot of the department heads, and we've afforded ourselves of the opportunity to have a number of conversations with those department heads, the town engineer, the DPW director, in really sussing out what the infrastructure here in town is and how this project can work with it and work with the capacities that are available to us. And those conversations will be, will be ongoing as we go through the project. We do want to stress a sense of environmental responsibility here, not only in terms of the limited clearing, but also in having a large site of about 15 acres, we would seek to utilize walking paths, nature connections, things of that nature that will encourage those residents who are independent to be able to walk through the site, connect with the trails that are there, get us down to the river, and really give them an amenity that's, that's outside of the typical, you know, enclosed spaces, if you will, that we've all been trapped in for the last year and a half. We have, there's a lot of grading that has to take place here, given the elevation change. We're committed to making that work in, in an efficient manner, but there's a lot of analysis still to be performed, and we're happy to work through that challenge with the town as we start to advance through the process. So when we get to the conclusion, I'm happy to answer any questions that we may have at this early stage for this board. Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Phil. So to conclude the presentation part of this dialogue, I'd like to just walk through the timeline here of the next steps that we envision to bring this project forward. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we're looking to submit a LIP application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development with the goal of permitting the project via a comprehensive permit through Chapter 40B. After we receive the approval from DHCD, we would apply for a comprehensive permit through Shrewsbury's ZBA. So to review the timeline here at the bottom, a couple of my colleagues have referenced a very productive meeting that we had with the Town's Department Heads on October 15th. We appreciate the feedback and the opportunities to go and, and continue to do our due diligence on the site with the various engineering groups and, and departments. Today, obviously, we're, we're here with the presentation to the Board of Selectmen, and after tonight's meeting, our hope is to continue to work to develop our site plan and work through a development agreement with the town. The development agreement would clearly define the project's various commitments and make sure that everyone going into the early stages of this project understands fully what's being committed to and what the project program entails, so that can be a very, you know, a fluid document to, to make sure that we cover anything that's of concern or question to the town. Our goal is to have the final LIP application by the end of the year, so we've earmarked a date here of December 28th, which we believe to be one of the, the Board of Selectmen's hearing dates, to present to you all a, an application for your approval. And upon granting that approval, we would promptly submit it to the DHCD for their review. We envision that to be a 90-day process that would conclude with a project eligibility letter. So that then would allow us to submit our comprehensive permit and commence the ZBA hearing process back here in Shrewsbury. So that we envision under this timeline would start in April of 2022, and we're fully committed to continuing to do all the, the engineering and homework that we can upfront to try to get this as well-thought-out and, and planned as possible in these early stages, and we'll continue that through that ZBA hearing process to, to try to bring this reality as, as promptly as, as we can to, to meet all of our objectives here. So that wraps up the presentation portion of, of our, of our, of our evening here. So on behalf of the entire team, I'd like to thank all of the members of the board for your time and consideration of the project. We spent a lot of time getting to this point and, and are, are hopeful that you all are as excited about the opportunity as, as we are, and, and I'd love to turn over to the floor to answer any questions that anyone may have for us here to help us in, in continuing to move forward.
Thank you. Mrs. LaS.
Sure. Thank you for your presentation. Just for the board's knowledge, some board members have been through a LIP process, others have not, and this is brand-new. And after your presentation you gave to the department heads, I have briefed all of them on what it means in general, but could you, in layman's terms, explain to the board what they would be doing by entering into a LIP, what that means, and what you would be offering in terms of the development agreement, and what you'd be asking the town to do in terms of a development agreement?
Sure. Now that makes sense. Do you want to share this after that, Tom?
Sure. The, the LIP process, basically, it's a, it's a joint, it's a joint process between the town and the developer, the applicant. And essentially, what, what, what the first step would be, would be the, what we call a development agreement, which really outlines the, the general terms, like a letter of intent for a purchase and sale agreement. So it outlines the, the scope of the project, the size of the project, it will define the project, the footprint, the height, the number of units, the number of affordable units as a general statement. It'll give you a, it'll give parameter ranges for both the market rate units and the affordable units. The affordable units are dictated by the state and DHCD. And then it would, it would outline the process in terms of us going forward, in terms of achieving that development agreement, and then that, all of that information would be basically grafted into a LIP application, which is provided by DHCD. It's a, it's a, it's a negotiation and discussion that go, that includes all of the various permits that are required, all of the fees that are required, water, sewer, you know, INI types of fees, you know, building permit fees, things of that nature, just generally just getting the total scope of what the project is. And the LIP being, the idea is it's a quasi, you know, public-private partnership where we're working with the town to get a project that the town is, will stand behind, and the town wants, the town wants, the town needs, the town assumes that, that, that need is out there and it's been defined. And we believe through our studies and analysis between the Housing Production Plan and the Master Plan, the demographic is, is going in the direction of seniors are aging and they, they need alternative housing. And so we would work, generally speaking, with you through that process, and our hope would be that we could do that, negotiate and discuss that development agreement over the next, say, 45 days, and, and that would be a give and take with the town manager and, and the various departments, and, you know, fire, police, engineering, water, sewer, et cetera. And getting to a final, really a scope that, that everybody is in agreement on, and, and then that, all that information would be grafted into the, into the LIP application. It's a, you know, it's a 24-page document, it's, it's, you know, it's online. I've been through it very recently with Phil Cordero in Ashland, the Arbella at Ashland, it was a 180-unit project. When we actually finally got to the point where we were able to complete the development agreement and to complete the LIP application, the LIP application took us like 90 days max. We submitted it to DHCD, and they have a 90-day turnaround period. The 90-day period went through, the PEL was issued, and, and then we went through, through the Ashland ZBA, and with 180 days, a final decision was made, and the Zoning Board of Appeals approved the project. It's currently under appeal, but it's, it was, it was approved. So it's a, it's really, it's a work, it's a work in progress, and it's working with the town, and, and hopefully the town, it becomes friendly versus, you know, an unfriendly 40B, and we think that in light of, of the benefits for the town, it, it works well as a LIP, and we want to invite you into the process versus, you know, a lot of developers are, you know, they're showing up with a 40B and they're trying to jam as many units as they can on the site to make it as economically profitable as they possibly can, where Gray Star is, is in the active adult business. And, you know... And, you know, we certainly see a need for that type of product here in town. And, you know, we're hopeful that, that Shrewsbury would like to work with, with Gray Star to, to pursue this type of a product.
I, I do just want to add also that the, the requests that we're going to make with the LIP application will not be by any means to sign off on all details of the project or a complete project design or anything of that nature. I, I, I'm sensitive to the fact that we're talking about a December date here. We, we will have a LIP application with a site plan, with unit mix and those level of details. And, and generally a, a, a near-complete site layout, a site plan. But there will be, after the process of the LIP application review, there will be a ZBA hearing process where we'll go through a complete engineering and, and, and design development process. So I just want to make sure that that, that's understood by everyone in the room here, that this is not, and this is not a request to get to a, a building permit in 45 days. This is, this is a, you know, it's a, it's an incremental process. We, we like to get the development agreement, which, which I don't believe is a, is a prescriptive requirement for a LIP application. We'd like to get that upfront so everyone knows all of the details that we'd like to establish in writing before we get to a LIP process and before we get to a ZBA process. But that's, that's more of a, you know, what we think is best practice and, and the way to just set the partnership right from the start. I, I would like to ask Karen, our, our counsel, if we missed anything, if you'd like to add any color on the process.
Just very briefly, I'm Karen Kepler from Sullivan and Muster. So in order to, for the units to qualify for the subsidized housing inventory, one of the words in that is subsidized. And LIP takes the place of a different kind of subsidy. It's a program that DHCD has created in order to allow developers and municipalities to jointly propose a, an affordable housing development that will qualify for the, for the subsidized housing inventory. If it's unfriendly, it can't be a LIP. So there would need to be a different subsidy program then to come in in order to enable the units to get to the subsidized housing inventory. So with this proposal, we are optimistic that the town will want to support it and that, that way, this quote friendly 40B will qualify for the LIP application. And then all units will count toward the town's 10%.
Can I just?
Yeah, please, Mrs. LaS.
So we've also talked in our discussions that you are proposing this as an over 55 active adult community. We are aware that there is a DHCD policy that the affordable units cannot be restricted to just 55 and over. Could you discuss that a little bit for, for the board's consideration as well, please?
Sure.
We, we have discussed this with DHCD and the, there are two different age categories, 155 and older and 162 and older. And if we are going to market the affordable units to 55 and older, we cannot restrict them from, you know, including, if, if the household has children in it, if one person is under 50, is under 55, that will still qualify under, under the state's anti-discrimination statute. In reality, that doesn't usually happen. That compliance with the state's anti-discrimination statute does not really affect the overall marketing unit, marketing mix because people with children don't want to be in this kind of a community.
We, we have also talked about this with our, our subsidized housing consultant, SEB Housing, who, who is going to assist us with compliance and leasing management for the affordable units. And, and they did some digging through their database of, of other age-restricted communities with a similar subsidized component. And they found in two other properties that they manage in the state with the same, or a similar scale of, of unit count, that there aren't any children living in those units. As Karen pointed out, it, you know, it's, it is, you know, these, these residents often do have options on where they're living. Their, their, their first choice would not be to bring school-aged children into a community of 55-plus adults. And, you know, it's, it's certainly what we've seen through our and our team's experience as well.
I'll open it up to the board. Thank you very much.
Alex, questions? Senator Paul, go ahead.
If I could. So are all your projects, or mostly our projects, 40Bs are LIPS?
Gray Star.
Do they have subsidized, do they have a subsidized housing component?
A lot of our projects do have a subsidized housing component. They, they are not generally 40B projects. I, I speak for myself and Gray Star here in, in, in our northeast division. Many, many communities are requiring that there's an affordability component to even a, a market rate development. So oftentimes those do have a LIP application involved with them. They do have a subsidized housing manager, similar to SEB Housing. So that, you know, depending on the community you're in, could be anywhere from 10, 15, 20% of the units. But they're not a, a, a 40B project. They, they just have a zoning ordinance that would require a certain percent affordability. So there isn't that subsidy component to it. It's just a, it's a, it's a restriction on rent's charge of those, those units.
Okay. We, we have the affordable housing component if it's a non-40B. But are you going the 40B route because of the zoning issue?
We are looking for comprehensive permitting through, yeah, 40B.
Just curious, you say you hold on to the properties. How long do you typically hold on to property? Are you, you develop and, and hold it long-term, like over 10 years? I know there's no guarantee in life, but I mean, it's.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it, it really varies. I think for, for, for our active adult portfolio in particular, the management piece is such an integral part of it. And we think that we are truly unique in the amount that we own and manage. So I, I'd be happy to, to look at our portfolio and, and, and give a little more color in terms of how many of the developed properties have been retained for periods of time. But, but it, it, it really varies. We still own our property down in Cape Cod. And at this point, we haven't made any sort of plans or commitments about, you know, trying to, trying to, to, to leave the property at any time. We're, we're, we're assuming that we're going to own it long-term.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mrs. LaS, I've been through the LIP before and it was successful. Will you remind me what the advantage to the town is to do a LIP?
Sure. Yeah, sorry.
Would you like me to answer or the developer to answer?
You.
I was not with the town when the LIP occurred for the Avalon, now Audubon property. But I do believe that there were certain developer payments that were made to the town for certain investments related to the offsets that would be created by that development. And then there's certain negotiations that the town can enter into and be agreed upon in advance of the comprehensive permit going before the zoning board of appeals.
I thought there was parts of that. But what, so if we went into this with an outline of a framework, as, as we just talked about, and we agree to it in the LIP, as, as, in the agreement, and the developer goes in front of ZBA, is ZBA bound by all of that strictly? Like if we talk about number of units, we talk about whatever. Are they, are they necessarily bound by what the LIP agreement is?
I will have to look into that further, but I believe it can be slightly flexible. I don't think that they can go over the amount of units that you've agreed.
No, that isn't what I meant. I meant if, if the board negotiates an agreement with the developer for so many units, certain, whatever, whatever the parameters are, physical structure. Is, is the ZBA bound by that?
I'm going to let their counsel answer for their side and I will dig into that further for our side. They seem very anxious to.
I just don't remember. It's.
So technically, no. The ZBA doesn't relinquish its authority under Chapter 40B because of these earlier arrangements and agreements with the select board. But one hopes that people are walking together down this path so that when the ZBA hearing takes place, things don't have to be renegotiated.
Karen, can we, can we talk briefly on the, the level of detail that would be included in a LIP application? And blessed by DHCD and, and, and just what that content looks like? Because I think that there's, there's two, there's, there's two pieces here, right? One is a development agreement with the town, but the other is also the application that we'll be submitting to the state for their review and approval, which will include certain details like unit mix, size, and, and things of that nature.
So the LIP process, which culminates in, in the way that this project is being structured, timing-wise, is, the result will be the project eligibility level, letter. And that level of review by DHCD is not at the same level as developed through the ZBA hearing process. So there would be a general, a general description of the type of building, the number of units, the materials to be used, size of units, things like that. But the, the real details would come through the ZBA process. And that's when the more final architectural drawings, that kind of thing, would be developed. So, but up until then, the overall description of the property, of the project would be what DHCD would be looking at.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm good for the moment. I talked to you offline about it. It was a long time ago. Relatively long time ago we did it.
Yep.
If I could also add just a bit on the, the benefit of a LIP. The LIP allows us to work through the 40B process together as opposed to the developer going to seek a subsidy outside of the LIP program, which, which is, is allowable under 40B. We could seek an alternate subsidy source for, for the project and seek a project eligibility letter without the involvement of the town. So that, that's not our preference. It's, it's the route that, that, that many developers go down. And it's the route that oftentimes you hear about with 40B projects, where, where, you know, there isn't alignment between the municipality and the developer upfront.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. LeBeau.
A question for the assistant town manager. What, what would 196 units do relative to the 10% threshold?
Sure. So I've reviewed our housing production plan and currently we are gauging our subsidized housing inventory on the 2010 census. We do not have the 2020 census data yet. So currently we have 187 units on our inventory, about 6.4% affordable. If we were going to go to 196 units, we'd be increasing by about 1.7%.
I'm sorry, so it'd be 6.4 plus 1.7?
Correct.
Eight point.
You know, we're, we're, we're over 500 units away from 10% on the 2010 census. It is not known at this time when DHCD is going to get the data for the 2020 census.
Okay.
But it is to note that we would reach that safe harbor and would not have to accept a 40B project for two years if this project were built in a one calendar year period.
Okay. And a follow-up if I?
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
For the manager, could we get some type of pro forma or a document of one-time fees that this project might generate? I think that would be very informative. And, and some estimate of, of tax revenue.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Any other questions? Mrs. Cassavan.
What is our timeline for making a decision around this? As whether or not to enter into the LIP?
December, is that what?
That's what they're asking for, is December.
Excuse me, but that's a self-imposed deadline, right?
I'll let them.
It's our request, yes.
So there's a, just a quick follow-up. We may end up, depending on availability, when we looked at the schedule, 28 probably was not ideal. So we may have to move that up a week. I don't know if that impacts either way, either before or after that, if that impacts your schedule.
I appreciate that.
Not that I've talked to everybody, but I think the last week of the year is tougher folks, is what I'm hearing, at least from a couple. Any other questions?
Just a question for you. If you could just flip to the site plan. I'm not sure how much you've done in terms of looking at the impact to businesses. I know that you mentioned it is an office, you know, research area, limited industrial zone. There is a property adjacent to what you're proposing that is a, I know, full disclosure, doggy daycare. I bring my dog there. I'm just looking at that and thinking if you've thought through, you know, given that it's not disruptive because there's businesses near there, but you start to put residential units and that's, you know, sort of a recipe for, for conflict. So I'm wondering if you've looked into that at all.
And, and would the concern be that residents, residential units may introduce just neighbor conflict or, or maybe some?
I'm thinking the noise, yeah, that if you start to put apartments right next to a dog border, that dog bark, you know, it's not disruptive right now. But I'm just wondering if you've already looked at, you know, the businesses that directly surround where you're proposing to put the property?
Sure.
Potential impacts or disruption could be.
Sure. So we, we are going to be doing, you know, certain, certain surveys. And we've, we've gone out and marked the wetlands, for example. But we're also going to be doing acoustical surveys to understand just what, what is the, the, the existing environment from those businesses, from the, the traffic along Route 20. And, you know, we, we also have a good understanding of the types of, of, of sound that our project would produce. We are not programming any sort of active outdoor venue-type uses. This is, you know, there, there is a pool. There, there will likely be things like grill stations and, and, and some patio uses. But certainly, especially at, you know, at this point, we haven't anticipated any sort of outsized noise generation other than vehicles pulling up to and, and, and parking at the property, people walking to and from the property, relaxing on the courtyard space out there. We, we think that, you know, especially with this demographic, it, it will likely be a very, very minimal acoustical impact on, on, on neighbors. And, and we're trying to understand that both ways, doing, you know, audio surveying and, 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 you know, would be happy to look at what that means the other direction as well if there are concerned business owners who, who might feel that this sort of project would impact them.
Right. I think that was your question, right, the other way? The, the existing uses and their impacts on residential.
Yes. Well, specifically also to make sure that we're not inadvertently driving other businesses out of business.
Right. That, that is something that I think can be surveyed and, and understood. And, you know, sort of the distance and sound issues would be something that we'll look at.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have, I have a couple. So I understand you have 46 properties over 55. You have 34 in Massachusetts. Do you know roughly how many in Massachusetts are like this, over 55 active living?
The one in Cape Cod.
Okay. And then you talked about determining the market from the housing production plan, looking at the demographics. Is it at least your other successful properties, is that more geographic in nature? Or is this, that's why active community over 55, I see it in terms of a lot of folks downsizing and going into condos so they don't have to do the stuff around the house anymore. I'm just curious, is there other market data? Or is it just looking at right now in terms of Shrewsbury and, or the surrounding areas and the, the aging group that you see?
Yeah. It, 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 there are, a lot of these trends are certainly on a national or on a statewide or, or a metropolitan level. So it, it isn't something that is, is uniquely characteristic of Shrewsbury. I, I do think though, that when you look at other factors that are very quantifiable on a municipal level, like the cost of housing and other, you know, population density and, and things of that nature, then you can piece together sort of which communities are, are going to be more exposed or less to the pressures of downsizing and seeking alternate housing. The, also the, just the, the quantity of, of rental properties is a big thing that we consider. If there are alternates to buying, especially in this age cohort, we find that buying a condo or, or, or buying a smaller house just isn't necessarily the best option for someone who's transitioning away from their longtime residence. So, you know, it's, it's a factor of a lot of these things. I think that it really is a regional issue when you think about the aging population and, and, and the retirement of, of the baby boomer generation. It's certainly something that, that's been on the radar of, of, you know, of multifamily operators for a number of years now. operators for a number of years now. And, and, you know, we, we think that we're, we're, we're able to offer something that's unique, and that it's positioned between some of those more service-intensive properties and between condo-for-sale projects, which you see much more of than the rental properties of this nature, and, you know, owning and, and, and living in a single-family home.
And then, just a related question, in terms of when you model this out and you determine the number of units, is it assuming certain costs? Is there any risk that you see to develop this with supply chain issues and inflation? Would that change your project, or have you seen with your existing projects, that really hasn't changed, that you have enough reserve built in to go forward as originally planned?
Sure. We certainly do our best to build in those reserves and build in those contingencies. I can tell you that, that on this project, this is very similar in nature to other multifamily projects, like Gray Star is building in-house in Massachusetts. So, we have a couple of other projects in the greater Boston area that are similar construction type, and, and we are the general contractor, so we are procuring those, those subcontracts directly. So, we have a very good finger on, on, on what the pulse of, of, of the, you know, the construction pricing industry is. We have factored in, you know, just the natural risk and, and unknowns of having a project that, that won't start for as long as this one has. And, and we're certainly doing a lot of work upfront to figure out, how do we work with this, you know, the, the site grading here, and, and how do we make sure that we are building in those right, those right contingencies? But, you know, I'd, I'd say across the board, we, we've certainly seen some fluctuation, both up, both down, across the different material pricing, labor pricing. But we have started, you know, one project about five months ago, which was 330 residential units, similar sort of, of, of podium-style construction. And we have a couple of others as well that we're actively working through pricing, we're actively negotiating contracts on. So, I, you know, I think as, as far as having a, a, a real read on pricing and being able to, to forecast and actually get these projects started in today's climate, we've, we're, we're as capable as anyone here.
And then, two more quick questions. How do you finance this? Debt, equity? Do you do a special purpose vehicle and bring investors in? How, what's the typical investment structure for one of your property developments?
Sure. So, we do bring on property-level debt for all of our projects. We're not at that stage now. We'll, we'll generally do that when we've got a, a negotiated construction contract, and, and, you know, that's probably 90 days before construction start. On the, on the, the, the equity side, Gray Star will cede the projects and be the sole equity up until a point. For our active adult projects, we do bring on, or we go to a, a, a select group of, of national equity partners who we work with on other projects, who know this product well, who know what we're doing and know the plan. And so, that, that's the route that we're, we're going through here, where Gray Star will be the, one of the, the equity partners in the project. We plan to bring on one other equity partner who would not be in the, in the, in the driver's seat, per se. We would be the general partner, and we would have control of all the development decisions, but we would have, you know, a third-party equity that we would plan to bring into this project.
How do you usually structure through a limited partnership? What do you do in LLC, what do you usually do? Your GP is an LP, how do you do that?
Yeah, so we would be the GP, we, we would form an, an LLC, which would be the ownership entity for the project, and then we would be the general partner, and there would be a limited partner.
Okay.
Yeah, in that, in that, in that, that, that joint venture.
Okay. And then, last question, a little different. In terms of your typical resident in the over 55, is it short-term lease, one year? What's the typical lessie that you have?
Yeah, you know, it, it ranges. I think that we, we often see people come from a similar point where they're, where they're moving out from, you know, their, their, their home, oftentimes their long-term single-family home. And, and where they go from there really varies. I think a lot of residents are looking for something where, where they truly are in transition. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a 12-month, it's, it's a typical 12-month lease, lease cycle, and whether the resident elects to stay, or, or really just live in our property for that 12-plus-or-minus months is more of a transition. It varies, but we do find that a lot of residents engage heavily with, with the programming we offer, that they build, they build communities and the properties and oftentimes stay for many years.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, I know you had a question.
Just regards to the timing conversation that was previously going on, does DHCD have a rolling application process, or do you have a hard deadline on a certain basis with them as we consider schedule?
I believe that's rolling.
Yes, it's rolling. This isn't a competitive process, so it's not that there's a target date that we need to have this in front of DHCD by.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That's one of the questions.
Mr. DePaolo, go ahead.
You said you have other 55 and over active, right?
Yes.
Okay. At least in Massachusetts, putting Cape Cod aside because there's a lot of trade plants down there. What do you find? Where are the people coming from who go into those? Is it, is it right, not necessarily in the entire community? You know, the entire site is filled up with people from the community, but do you have any sense of what the percentage is of people who move, like, from, who, people in Shrewsbury who might move from home they have in Shrewsbury into a unit like this?
Yeah, so we, we, we find that for these types of communities, it's, it, it is a local population. It, it is people who are looking to stay close to their, their, their long-term community and their long-term place of residence. We, we don't find that, and we wouldn't expect that residents would, you know, come from far away to transition into a community like Shrewsbury at that point in their life. It's, it's generally about maintaining proximity to their family, to their friends. And, and so, as a result of that, the radius, it's difficult to put an exact number or percentage on that, but, but the radius is, is, is smaller for this type of property than you'd see for a lot of our, our other multifamilies.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Laszlo, next steps, nothing, nothing required from the board tonight, correct?
Right, nothing required from the board tonight, just for you to take in this information. If you have any further questions, if you wouldn't mind going through myself or Mr. Mizikar, we can certainly get in touch with Gray Star. I think they have some things that they'd like to firm up to present back to you related to the potential of a LIP, and we should probably schedule another session between now and your first December meeting to discuss, are you willing or not to enter into this, and then move forward with that process if you are?
Okay. That's great. So, we'd look at the first meeting, I guess, in December, right? Because we have the, okay. That works.
Okay.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is under meetings, a meeting with Richard Ricker regarding a request for storage parking at 3 Commerce Road by Tri-State Truck Center, Inc. Good evening. Thank you for your, thank you for your patience.
Oh, it was interesting.
Yeah?
It was all interesting. I can tell you the last time that I looked at the cards at the assessor's office with the chief assessor, my taxes went up. But, that was commercial. And that was because they weren't counting paving, and we determined it when we were looking at the cards. They weren't counting paving. So, that's one of those mistakes that you find when you go back and look at those cards. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney here representing Tri-State Truck Center, Inc., who is the licensee of the Freightliner dealer down on Route 20 on Hartford Turnpike. As noted in my letter to you, we are looking to have your permission to park some vehicles from that dealership on a lot that has recently been separated from the main parcel by the A&R process. So, this is the lot next door. If you're familiar with the sites, if you look at Tri-State Truck Center from Hartford Turnpike, this is the plateau on the hill above Tri-State and Tri-State to the east of the Tri-State, Tri-State main building. As you will recall, we came before you for the select trucks proposal to move select trucks from the westerly parcel of Tri-State onto this parcel, in a building that has been scheduled to be built on, as you can see in the site plan, on the part of this parcel closest to Hartford Turnpike. When I was in front of you the last time, when we were talking about the license change for select trucks to move up to this portion of the, the site, we did not show you a plot plan which detailed other activities on the site. Part of that reason, well, the main reason for that is that I wasn't aware that UPS uses the, the site as well. They use the, the middle portion of the site, if you look at the plot plan, the layout plan, they use the middle section on a seasonal basis only. They go, they, they have a license agreement with Tri-State, actually BTR, which is the landowner, BTR Realty LLC is the landowner. UPS has an agreement with them whereby UPS puts somewhat of, it's, it's a portable cross-dock type of trailer on the site, which is shown on, you know, it's, it's a long, narrow trailer with doors on both sides. They put a mobile office trailer on the site, and they, they load their small trucks on this site, and they, and they swap loads between all the, the various trucks in order to accommodate Christmas deliveries. And this is really, from my discussions with the UPS folks, this is their Christmas delivery sorting site for the, for the smaller vehicles, the vans and the, they use U-Haul vehicles and things of that nature in order to trans, transport the smaller packages to the houses in the area. So, in any event, that seasonal use was not shown on the initial site plan. We're before you now, asking you to review the plan. As you can see, there is a, a portion of the site further back from Route 20, which is a fairly sizable area, which Tri-State has been parking vehicles on. Now that the A&R process separates these lots, and based on our discussions with the building department, and based on the discussion, based on the fact that we want to move forward with the select trucks building, which presently, we're attempting to get foundation permit and building permits for, we needed to come back to you and request your permission, and I'm, I'm asking you to authorize Tri-State to park some of their vehicles over on this lot, as we're showing on, on the rear of this site. They would access this rear portion by that driveway that you see, the rear driveway that goes to the, to the site next door. So, it's mostly new vehicles, but you see a lot of trade vehicles as well. They take in trades, and they also have company vehicles and fleet vehicles. So, a lot of the times, you'll see that their sales go to fleets, and while they're waiting for those sales to go through, they'll, they'll park a number of trucks back here, and they're all tractors, not the trailers. So, I hope I've explained it adequately. That's basically what we're here for. I'm here for.
Thank you. Colleagues, Mr. DePaolo, questions?
Basically, in that section, you want to continue doing what you're doing before you split the lots.
Correct.
And so, we need to amend the license to allow off-site storage of vehicles?
As, as you've done in the past for other dealers, yes. That's what we're asking for.
Your, your other issue with UPS and that is that, that's not related to what we're talking about right now?
No, but what we, what we wanted to do is make sure that you have the proper site plan now for, for the select trucks proposal. As you know, the site plan that we gave you at the time did not have the UPS use on it.
Mm-hmm.
And it is seasonal. It's only, you know, it's, it's during the holiday season. So, frankly, I didn't even know about it until all of a sudden, they started putting trailers up there.
Any other questions? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the request to amend the license of Tri-State Truck Center, 3 Commerce Road, to allow off-site parking of vehicles as proposed in the plan and the letter submitted to the board.
I've been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a very interesting evening.
Next item on the agenda, under new business, to review an act on the road closure request from Andrew Truman, Town Engineer, for a closure of Clue Street on November 18th and 19th, from Route 20 to Grafton Street from 8:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. to perform geo-probes/ borings. Mr. Truman, good evening. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, everyone. The record Andy Truman, Town Engineer, so yes. So, this is some work being done by Weston Sampson, who's a town consultant for sewer. It's in relation to what we're calling the Phase 2 sewer expansion, which essentially will pick up sewer from Route 20, which is around Purington or Polito Drive, right about there, and will tie essentially right through to the sewer work for Point Hill's farm, which will be at Stony Hill, basically in front of Trinity Church. So, originally, you know, as part of the Point Hills decision, they are agreed to bring the sewer down to pretty much the intersection of Clues and Route 20. So, the town is now looking at options to continue sewer. The first logical route was to continue going down Route 20, but we realized, looking at it logistically, just building a sewer in Route 20 under the bridge was really not going to be a good idea. So, Weston Sampson has floated the idea of bringing the sewer up Clue Street and putting a pump station somewhere on the corner of Clue Street and Memorial Drive. The town does own a small parcel there. But we are aware that there's ledge in Clue Street, so we just want to do some due diligence and have a geo-prob go in there and just do some probing, see the ledge in. So, it should be a couple of days of work. I've reached out to the school department, they do have school buses, but we will obviously facilitate them. Waste management actually picks up on a Wednesday, so it should not impact them. So, we'll really just be coordinating with the school department, and then obviously the local residents on halt in Clues. I mean, a lot of people cut through 20 to Memorial 140, but they can easily just go to interchange, get up there, and we'll put up signage. So, releasing permission to close it down for a maximum of two days, and maybe quicker. But surely having to ask any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. DePaolo.
Just clarification. Clue Street goes from Route 20 to 140, from 140 out to-
Grafton Street, yep.
Which part are you working on?
All of it, really. So, essentially, we cut to Clue Street.
The entire length?
Yeah, I mean, we won't do anything in 140, but we'll come up to Clue Street, probably do one, then jump across.
Okay, so the entire length of Clues?
Yeah. Because, as I say, there's a small parcel, just as you go across 140, that the town owns. If, if, if it works out well, then we may well put a pump station there. Originally, we were going to put one down, and, and, you know, roadies parking a lot as part of the UPS, poor assumption, but it really makes more sense because you can certainly pick up a lot more houses and, you know, residents in there and provide sewer in that neighborhood. So, yeah, we'll be, you know, across Clues, not actually 140, then it's Grafton.
So, would you go? But Clues obviously doesn't come back on one end, on the west end, doesn't come back out through Route 20, it goes on the, the old part of Grafton Street, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to go all the way back out to Route 20 eventually? Is that what you're going to do? You're going to make a loop around the back of-
The sewer or for the traffic?
The what?
The traffic.
No, the, the sewer line.
The sewer line, yeah. Well, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll bring it up Clue Street, move on 20, we'll put the pump station in there, and then we haven't quite figured, figured out the logistics. It will probably go up Grafton Street. There's possibility we may bring it down Purington Street, which was, was still very early in the-
Okay.
... design process, so what we are doing is, you know, as part of the Route 20 widening, we are making some provisions at that end of Purington Street for the collar sector size of sewer. But, yeah, it's, it might be a more logical route, but we're, we're still very early in the process. The ledge may make it prohibitive, but, you know, if we do do that, then we can pick up a lot more people with sewer, because if we carry on down Route 20, essentially, you know, through the interchange, there's no, there's no frontage there, there's no properties that would, you know, benefit from the sewer. We can still pick up UPS by coming through roadies and, or down Grafton Street, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Move approval of the request to close Clue Street on the dates requested by the town engineer, November 18th and 19th, from Route 20 to Grafton Street from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
I've been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. You too. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is review an act on the extension of Board of Selectmen Policy 25 Water and Sewer Bill, partial abatements. Just by way of background, this policy was originally adopted in November of 2016, and latest, the latest revision date of November 10th of last year. The policy itself recognizes contributing conditions related to the prolonged impact- The policy itself recognizes contributing conditions related to the prolonged impact, in this case prolonged disproportionate impact, and provides some relief relative to the impact on customers. This impact is from manganese, the natural occurring mineral in the town water. The policy itself provided that the water and sewer superintendent may grant to water and sewer customers partial abatements to offset instances where water was used excessively to remove discoloration. There was also an opportunity where the payment of up to $175 could be made for, to any single household in the events that there's been damage to clothing or related items such as appliances. Last year, we extended this policy and when we did it, we stated that the board will consider the question of extending the policy in November of 2021 while we're here, believe it or not. The policy right now currently expires on December 31st, 2021. Mr. Rowley had sent a letter, he is our water and sewer superintendent, and he had indicated his email that the unidirectional flushing, they've made significant progress since the fall of 2019. We have completed unidirectional flushing in zones one through eight. They were looking to start zone 11 this past Monday and then there's still, three zones remain to be completed. So what Mr. Rowley had asked is that the board consider extending this policy for one more period of, one more time. He also provided a summary of abatements or and/or payments made to date and there's a total of $740 so far under this policy. So that's what we have right now, the request, given where we are with unidirectional flushing to extend it. Maybe a similar amendment that would extend it for a year and then to revisit in November of 2022. Any questions or comments or thoughts?
So we just want to extend it through the end of December of 2022?
Yep, and then we'll look at it again November like this year, just add a year to everything. Is there a motion? There are no questions.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve changes to clause 11 of Policy 25 to extend the policy through December 31st of 2022 and to amend the note that the board will consider the question extending the policy in November of 2022.
Second. I've been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Committee relative to the Medicare Eligible Retiree Health Insurance Program for the calendar year 2022 pursuant to Master General Law's Chapter 32b, Section 3. I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Mizikar.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
Before we start, I'm going to recuse myself from this item because I have a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the board, this evening, we're bringing revised rate approach for your consideration that has been recommended by the Insurance Advisory Committee and voted on by the West Suburban Health Group Board of Directors. There are modest increases in these senior plans, which all Medicare eligible retirees of the town are eligible for and actually are required to enter into. They cannot stay on our active plans once they become Medicare eligible. These plans are all very similar to last year. There is one technical change where the Tufts Medicare Preferred Supplemental PDP Plus Plan will move from a fully insured to a self-insured plan from a management standpoint. That actually alleviated a higher rate increase year over year and I think it will be in a better managed plan for the West Suburban Health Group. The vast majority of our retirees are on the Harvard Pilgrim Medicare Enhanced Plan, which would experience a 1.8% increase. And I'm happy to answer any other questions. These plans are rated on a calendar year basis, so they would go into effect January 1, 2022.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Not all entertain a motion.
Move we approve the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Committee relative to Medicare Eligible Retiree Health Insurance Program, calendar year 2022.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Let Mr. DiPaolo know that we didn't go too far. There he is. Welcome back. So next item on the agenda is number 15. It is to review an act on the Regulatory Agreement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants for Rental Project for Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond Development. I will give this a try and then Mrs. Lass, if you wouldn't mind adding to that. So back in July, Mrs. Lass had sent a memo to us talking about the Edgemere Crossing Regulatory Agreement, summarizing Edgemere Crossing and that the regulatory agreement, which is drafted and included in our package at that time, which the specific roles and responsibilities of the developer, D H C D, the municipality and the union occupant are documented. And back in the summer, the town manager's office was asking for the Board of Selectmen to sign the application form itself. And if the form is signed and approved by D H C D, we will be asking for the Board of Selectmen's signature on the regulatory agreement at a future date. That date is here. Included in this is the project, this project including 250 residential units and 10% shall be constructed and perpetually reserved as affordable housing units. So that was part of this agreement and that's included in there and a restrictive covenant, presumably we recorded on the land as well.
That is correct.
Did that cover it?
Yes.
Okay.
You did a great job.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Move we authorize the chair to sign the document.
Second. I've been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the salary adjustment for the town manager. Colleagues, as you know, the town manager's contract requires at least an annual examination of his compensation. In the past several months, we have looked at the market, as we all know, we go back to Mr. Mizikar's review. He's done extraordinary job for us. He's an extraordinary leader who even most recently proactively had developed a five-year fiscal projection before COVID-19. Unbeknownst to us, we'd go into a pandemic, he quickly pivoted and he was able to utilize this fiscal projection readily as we were looking in these unprecedented times. He consistently has performed great work, as we have seen, he and his office have brought us forward. We're looking at a strategic plan. We've looked at reorganizations of municipal organizations as well to leverage multiple efficiencies and simply put, he's done great work. So what we did is we, you know, part of any compensation philosophy is part of attracting and retaining, we were looking at, or at least become mindful of the fact that the position of town manager, looking at how the market had developed and we noted that in many comparable communities, the compensation of town managers had continued to go up. So we looked at Mr. Mizikar's compensation, at least his base salary and information that we looked at included comparable community analysis determined by the state, also utilized by the Personnel Board. We've looked at survey data for compensation of town managers and administrators throughout the Commonwealth, also specifically at comparable communities, looking at those through survey data as well as what's publicly available. And looking at that information and also wanting to maintain or given the importance of this role and the strength of Mr. Mizikar's performance, we looked at his compensation and we made some decisions on that. We're also mindful that we don't want Mr. Mizikar to be in the position of looking elsewhere. We want to retain for the long term. The cost to replace is significant and we know that when you have a strong leader in this area, there are not a lot out there, the pool is relatively thin. So that, I just wanted to set the table as to what we've done to date. I didn't know if there are any comments or questions. We had talked about his compensation and just wanted to open it up from there. I get, well, the only thing from there is, so we had talked about increasing Mr. Mizikar's salary, I put it out there, up to increases based at $205,000. That is again, based on market survey data, looking at, taking a deeper dive as well to other adjacent communities. So it's not only those that are comparable communities, but look at a geographic proximity as well to see what other communities are doing, what they're paying, looking at budget sizes and looking at what they're currently paying, particularly with recent hires. So looking at the market, we felt it was important an adjustment would be made and hence that was the number that we had talked about. Mrs. Gasivan?
You know, you did an excellent job of just laying out the process. We started talking about this several months ago in executive session. I think that we have done our due diligence to make sure that we are not only offering a competitive salary for the manager, but also that we were looking at increasing his salary for the right reasons. I think that we've done all that and, you know, he's the third manager that we've had in Shrewsbury. I believe that we, well, there was one other ones, but we don't really talk about him that often. I mean, we keep managers because we treat them fairly, we treat them well, we compensate them accordingly. We did find ourselves in a situation where we needed to adjust the compensation when Mr. Margato retired because we weren't keeping up with the compensation to be competitive in the market. We're a community of 38,000 residents now. It is quite the responsibility to not only lead this community, but lead this community well and through a pandemic. Mr. Mizikar's brought not only a vision for Shrewsbury, but also for the, for the organization, but also for the community and he's been steadily working towards that goal over the last four years. So I fully support the increase in his salary.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. DiPaolo?
I would agree. I think first and foremost, the adjustment's appropriate because of the job that Mr. Mizikar has done. That to me is the most important thing. But at the same time, I'm concerned about equity within the market and it's pretty obvious that in a very short period of time, I know we were competitive when Mr. Mizikar hired, it wasn't that many years ago and things have changed a lot. So I think it's appropriate that we make the adjustment and I don't want to find us in the same position we were in with Mr. Margato where, for various reasons and nothing bad, it was just, his salary didn't get appropriately adjusted over the years and then we had to make a big adjustment at, when he retired. And I think if somebody's doing a good job, they should be compensated when they're here, not talk about what a great job they did when they, when they're gone. So from what I've seen, as everybody else said, what we've seen around, I think this is more than appropriate. It might even be a bit conservative, but I think it's a good start and I just, I agree that I think we should do it. And I think Mr. Mizikar is certainly worth it and people don't leave just for money, but sometimes you get in a position where money becomes something you have to take into account, even if you like where you are. And I'd like him to stay and certainly we've done what we can to encourage him to stay and I think this is part of that and I think he's deserving of the raise. So I would agree with that.
Thank you. Mr. LeBeau?
Based on Mr. Mizikar's performance and based on the dynamics of the industry, I am totally supportive of this proposal.
Any other questions or comments?
Same.
Okay, great.
As my colleagues.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board, the board establish, I couldn't think of the verb, establish a salary adjustment for the town manager at an annual rate of $205,000.
Second. Been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Mizikar. Thanks for all of your hard work. If there's nothing else, we're now into correspondence. Number 17, email dated October 22nd, 2021 from Hillary Sullivan of 75 Floral Street regarding traffic, the speed of traffic at Floral and the concern about that. What's the thoughts on that, should the board, you want to do a speed study on that? Is that something we can add to the list?
Yep.
We had one at Honeysuckle, so we'll follow that up in that area. So noted, next item is email dated October 22nd, 2021 for John McCordy, 25 Thomas Farm Circle regarding the Tobin Hill Bridge and whether or not the state would fund it or the application of funds from the sale of Centec North and that, so noted. Next item, email dated October 25th, 2021 from Anadaro Office of State Representative Hannah Kane regarding request for update on Seven Boston Turnpike in Shrewsbury, the old Buca property, just a question on that. And Representative Kane had asked, this is her fourth letter over the past two and a half years and she was asking, given the viability and vibrancy of that property, what the next steps would be, so noted. Next item is email dated October 25th, 2021 from Anadaro Office of State Representative Hannah Kane regarding Oak School in Shrewsbury, so noted. Next item is email dated October 25th, 2021 from Kevin Prezinecki, Principal Transportation Officer, Central Mass Regional Planning Committee regarding public meeting notice, so noted. Next item, email dated October 25th, 2021 from Keith Elms, Animal Control Officer and Animal Health Inspector regarding the July to September quarterly report, so noted. Next item is email dated October 26, 2021 from Thomas Powers, Powers Realty Development and Consulting, Gray Star Development, regarding Gray Star Development's desire to meet with the board, so noted, which we met with them earlier, obviously. Next item, email dated October 28th from Edward Giordano, Seven Harvest Road regarding traffic issues over at Cherry Street, Cherry and Gold Streets. Mr. Mizikar and I met with Mr. and Mrs. Giordano earlier before this meeting, so noted, and we have some initial thoughts in terms of steps. Next item is an email dated November 1st, 2021 from Anadaro Office of State Representative Hannah Kane regarding House and Gross's ARPA spending bill, so noted. Next item is a letter dated November 2nd, 2021 from Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager, Economic Development Coordinator regarding schoolchildren and housing developments in October 2021. So noted, Mrs. Lass, any comments on that? It's pretty straightforward, but additional?
Thank you. Just annual update that I'd like to provide to the board and pretty standard that we're seeing that the majority of the schoolchildren are coming out of the single family or the duplex style housing and the apartments are yielding much less children with the exception of Avalon, which has many more three bedroom units and more affordable units than Madison Place, Lakeway Commons and the like. And next year, we'll probably be adding Edgemere Crossing onto your list to look at that as well.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Thank you. So noted, so the next item is an email, a letter, excuse me, received November 3rd, 2021 from Geo Syntec Consultants regarding submittal of release notification form and immediate response action plan, 115 Northeast Cut Off, Worcester, Mass. So just so I understand, this, this all relates to PFAS, is that it? And they're kind, the old Allegro used to be there, right? Is that what this relates to? Just in terms of looking at whether they contributed PFAS? That's what this bill was, you know? Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? PFAS is ever developing, that's so noted. Next, items 28 through 31, I'll take them in tandem, they are all Z E B A decisions dated October 25th, 21. So that's it for the formal part of the agenda. There are not any other items to consider. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. I've been moved in second and all those in favor adjourning, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for joining us. We'll next convene on November 23rd. Thank you.